I will now call to order the Withfield Town Council meeting Monday, March 25th, 2024 at 5:00 p.m. in the Municipal Building at 150 East Monroe Street, Withfield, Virginia. We do have a quorum. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilman Gary Gilman.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which we serve, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
All right, next on the agenda is actually approval of the agenda.
This time, Mayor Taylor, I would like to amend the agenda to have a discussion to item H, to discuss giving the town employees the day off on Friday, the 29th.
So we have a ended the agenda. We have, we have a motion and we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All right, here are none, this will be a roll call vote. Councilwoman Johnson?
Johnson, aye.
Atkins, aye.
Taylor, aye.
Patterson, aye.
Yoman, aye.
Agenda has been approved. Next is a reminder that a six o'clock p.m. scheduled recess if necessary. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda, which consists of minutes of the special meeting of March 6th, 2024, and a regular meeting of March 11th, 2024. I need a motion?
Still move.
A motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, is there any discussion? No, 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 please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye as well, any opposed? Motion passes. Next on the agenda is to consider the renewal of a lease of town property for the Withfield Farmers Market located at 210 West Spring Street in Withfield. They are here at this time for a public hearing, so I'm going to go ahead and open up the public hearing. I do not have anybody signed in or that has, that wishes to talk about this during public hearing, but if there's anybody out there, please up to the podium and... So it doesn't look like we have anybody to speak to the public hearing, so we are going to go ahead and close the public hearing. I didn't even know, I didn't...
You did, ma'am, you asked for, you asked for public comment.
All right, thank you. Next is consideration by town council to renew the lease of town property for the Withfield Farmers Market located at 210 West Spring Street. Do I need a motion?
Still move.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second, but I do have a question about that, if that's okay.
Turn a second, any discussion?
Yes, ma'am. I'd like to see if there was any way that, that the council would consider, I know it says from 2:15, and I was wondering if we could just do a flat 300 for the...
Talking about like...
For, for rent, for rent, for like rent.
Are you referencing the utility fee reimbursement? Lease agreements?
For the, well, you, you had explained that it was like 2:15?
Yes, ma'am.
And then it was going to go up to like 3:32, I think it was?
Right, so in your package, you have the most recent lease agreement, and you'll notice in there that I did modify the section on the reimbursement for the utility fees. As you recall, at the last meeting of the council, we did have some conversation about that, and since that time, we also did the 10% reduction to the electrical for the use of the building for the radio controls for Main Street. I also modified the agreement to show that the new utility fee reimbursement amount would not take place until July, so if you look in your package, you'll see those changes that I made. I did that in an effort to help ease the burden to the farmers market so that they have some time to plan for that utility fee reimbursement. But, you know, at the council's pleasure, staff will do what you wish.
So, so what, what is the one that's going to go into effect?
So it would be $338.
Okay, right. So what I'm asking, if council would consider a flat 300?
Excuse me, I apologize, it would be $322 a month, or they can pay a yearly amount. The 330 was before we did the 10% reduction. So if you look on page five of your documents, maybe everybody can just go there with me if you don't mind, so we can all read that together. You just look up when you're there.
While, while you're looking at it, I did reach out on Saturday to the Farmers Market and today by phone call, and to make sure that they didn't have any questions or concerns, and they explained that they understood what you did last time, and they were okay with that.
Okay, so it sounds like if everybody's on page five, what staff is proposing is that utility fee shall be $322 a month. Regarding your intent to, to lower that to $300 a month, is that for the foreseeable future? Because essentially, this thing will be reevaluated each year and based on the actual annual cost.
Okay, I know, I know staff is, is suggesting that, and I am, as a council person, asking if that can be reduced to 300, not the 322.
Okay.
I mean, I don't, I don't know if, I mean, I may not be making myself clear, I, I don't know.
Okay, so you should ask that of your other council members then?
Well, I, I, I did, and then I know that you all said, you know, staff is suggesting, I, I'm asking, can, would council consider doing a flat 300?
So we are now in the discussion portion of this. Is there any other discussion or...
I have no objection to the flat 300.
Is this for one year, Councilman Atkins, for one year, right?
But don't we renew it like every year?
We do, but we're talking about one year.
One year, yes, if, if, if that's what the agreement says, one year instead of the 322, I'm asking if we could, as, you know, I'm, I'm asking, it's just my suggestion, can we look at 300, a flat 300? For one year, until they renew the contract again? I'd like to give that consideration, I'd like to make that motion.
Will that contract be renewed in January or in...
So in essence, again, if you look at the agreement, starting on page four, so those of you who are on page five, go back to page four, and you will notice that, starting with 15A, the utility fee shall be calculated by adding up the monthly utility fees for the previous year, and calculating the average monthly fee based on the previous year's total actual utility costs incurred by the town. So the dollar value that you see proposed today by staff reflects last year's actual utility costs to operate the Farmers Market building. If you go to a flat fee of $300 a year, next year, for example, the actual utility costs may be $400 a month. So that's where the clarity lies, is, you know, this lease agreement is for five years, so do you want it to remain flat 300 for the foreseeable future until we are forced to look at this lease again? Or did you just want to do a year one of $300, and then year two revert back to the actual costs incurred for the previous year? And that's the clarification that I think we would need to know. I do know that, at this point, there's a motion and a second on the table, correct? To approve this lease agreement, so what, what would we do, Mr. Castle, if you wanted to modify the lease agreement?
If you want to modify, what you should do is vote down that motion, because the initial motion was to approve it as written.
Okay, I'd like that.
So you, and so you would go on and have a vote and vote it down, and then you can, Ms. Atkins, you can make your motion to modify this lease agreement, the way you're discussing it, and you can fix that up for you.
All right, I would like to vote that down, please, with the three, the over 300, and I'd like to make a motion to do a flat 300 for one year, and then we can reevaluate it in a few years.
So, Madam Mayor, I suggest that you go to vote on your initial motion, which was about the lease with the 322, and that's what the initial vote is.
We have a motion and we have a second.
So just for clarity, when he said voted down, the whole council will have to take that.
That is correct. Yeah, yeah. Correct. Your roll call, Madam Mayor.
So, we are now voting on what we had previously had, and so we roll call vote. Mr. Gilman?
Gilman, aye.
Patterson, aye.
Taylor, aye.
Atkins, no.
The vote is for the lease as written.
Somebody, let's, let's reverse it, let's have some clarity on the, the vote. So is this the reversal of the previous motion?
No, no, ma'am. This is the, this is the vote for, to approve it as written for the $322.
Okay.
That's what this vote is.
For the... So, okay. It's second. Okay, so if, no, Johnson, no.
So next on the agenda is our citizens' period. And we do not have anybody that has commented that they want to come, if you can counsel to the podium. If there's anybody out there now in citizens' period, feel free to come up to the podium. All right, if not, we will move forward. Next on the agenda is to consider scheduling a public hearing for the town council meeting on Monday, April 8th, 2024 at 5:00 p.m., or as soon thereafter as possible in the council chambers, to consider an amendment to the fiscal year 2023-24 budget pursuant improvements. I think, Johnson has given any questions for that? Not, I would like council to consider to schedule a public hearing for Monday, April 8th, 2024, town council meeting. Is there a motion and a vote? Do I have a motion?
Still move.
A motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, is there any discussion? I hear none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? All right, that motion passes. Next on the agenda is actually the Withfield Arts Council regarding Chicago, and they have six items on here for us to approve. If I can get councils' okay, I would like to do all six items in one, one vote. Council okay with that?
No, ma'am. I have a couple of questions, I mean, if you could take the questions.
Well, we'll just do it one by one.
That's fine.
Our first item is to consider the request of Withfield Arts Council to provide traffic control Friday, June 14th, Saturday, June 15th, and Sunday, June 16th, 2024, for Chicago Consideration of town council to approve or deny this, I need a motion, please.
I move that we pass, give them permission to, with Withfield Arts Council, for us to provide traffic control on 14th, 15th, and 16th for the balloon.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, is there any discussion?
Mayor Taylor, on, on this, and I, I'm not for sure of it, is, is the town listed as a sponsor?
Yes.
I mean, I was asking, Mayor Taylor.
Well, I guess you said we are, I don't know, I don't know the answer to that question, but sponsor.
Councilwoman Atkins, I can answer that. So we did meet with the Withfield Arts Council, and we asked that we be listed as a sponsor in all of their materials, and they said that they would do that for us.
Thank you.
Sure.
Now, I believe that was at your request before. Thank you, ma'am.
I was just double checking, Mayor Taylor, just double checking. Thank you.
She did it, please. So all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye as well, any opposed? That motion passes, thank you. Next is to consider request of Withfield Arts Council to provide traffic control on Saturday, June 15th to 24th for the Chicago Festival Parade. I need a motion?
No.
A motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, is there any discussion?
Yes, I want to ask a question, will there be barriers used?
Barriers in reference similar to the Christmas parade?
The, are, are the ones that are filled with water?
The Jersey bear.
Yes.
Yes, they typically use the Jersey bear.
As, will water be placed in them?
If it be in summertime, I would answer yes. But we did have a conversation after the last event, and we, so it would public work, so they know that they are supposed to put those in.
What's the difference in having them filled in the summertime or the wet?
Well, you're going to create ice skating rink in the middle of the street when they try to drain them, that's the problem.
It could be put down.
If, if it's a dead winter, and you fill it up with water, we can't lift them, there's only one option, which is to pull the plug.
As long as it's not freezing.
Correct, correct.
Okay.
Yes.
But it also could be put down, drained, but anyway, so they will be filled?
They will be, yes.
Okay, who does that, who actually fills them?
So I believe it's either the fire department or...
Okay. That's my question, thank you. I mean, we bought them to use that way, so I just hope that they're not being used that way for safety. Okay, thank you.
Sure. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? None, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye as well, any opposed? Motion passes. Next on the agenda is to consider the request of Withfield Arts Council to provide traffic control on Saturday, June 15th, 2024, to conduct the Chicago Fun Run. Do I need a motion?
I would like to make a motion to consider the request of the Withfield Arts Council to provide traffic control on Saturday, say, June 15th?
Correct.
To conduct the Chicago Fun Run.
A motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? Here are none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye as well, any opposed? That motion passes. Next is to consider the request of Withfield Arts Council to provide traffic control on Saturday, June 25th, 2024, to conduct the Chicago Festival 5K. Need a motion?
No.
A motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, is there any discussion?
That's on June 22nd.
I'm happy sitting, Mr. Gilman, second?
Yes, great, good.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye as well, any opposed? That motion passes, well. Next is to consider the request of Withfield Arts Council's waiver of fees for the use of Withers Park, Elizabeth Brown Memorial Park, and the Fourth Street Civic Center beginning Friday, June 14th, 2024, through Sunday, June 23rd, 2024, for the Chicago Festival Event.
I'd like to make a motion to consider the request of the Withfield Arts Council for waiver of fees for the use of Withers Park, Elizabeth Brown Memorial Park, and the Fourth Street Civic Center, beginning Friday, June 14th, 2024, through Sunday, June 23rd, 2024, for the Chicago Festival Event.
Do I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Anyone in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye as well, any opposed? That motion passes. Next is to consider the request of Withfield Arts Council for the issuance of a raffle permit for calendar year 2024. Need a motion?
Still move.
Motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Here are none.
Hold on just a second, so consider the request of the Withfield Arts Council for the issuance of a raffle permit, are they able to be exempt from requesting to have a permit each year because it's something that they do each year? Or is that a no? Do they have to...
I'm not sure exactly what status they are, but there's certain statuses, like we have, like the other, that have to go to, have to go to the state as opposed to local, and those people don't like going to the state, so they opt to come here to get permitted. I would assume they are under that.
Okay, I know that sometimes, depending on their status, they can be exempt, okay.
I'll, I'll look into it, but I'm sure if that was the case, they would already been moved on. All right, and the, next on the agenda is new business, oh, I'm sorry. Do I have a motion and a second? Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye as well, any opposed? That motion passes. New business, Mr. Freeman.
No new business, that's right.
H.
Consideration of giving the town employees off Friday, 29th.
Oh, we put it here, okay. Well, I knew we did it, but I thought I didn't know what it was.
Ms. Johnson, does council, does county do that for county employees?
Yes, ma'am, they will be closed on Friday.
Thank you.
We have a motion to, a consideration for March 29th, 2024, to discuss approvals of the day off, giving the town employees the day off for holiday weekend. We have a motion, is there? We have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second, now we can go to the discussion, is there any discussion?
Mr. Freeman, what kind of, does this present a good problem or a bad problem?
Well, I think it'd be a welcome problem.
Okay.
Obviously, there, and you all know this, we talked about this, but there are certain operations that won't be able to be shut down, those employees would be credited with an eight-hour, you can call it a repaid holiday, we moved away from that term two or three years ago, but they would basically be credited with additional leave time. Those that could or didn't have meetings and things already scheduled, certainly.
Some of our employees do have children, and they're on spring break, and it makes it kind of hard on our employees when, if the county's closed, our employees are working, and so they get a lot of complaints, so to alleviate any problems for our employees, that's why I made this proposal.
Well, I agree with you.
And I'd like for them to enjoy spending time with family, family is important.
Absolutely.
I don't think there's an objection, I'm just saying, like, there will be a few employees that, that will have already, you know, scheduled things, and will come on in, and obviously our police fire EMS, I'm sure the rec center will, will remain open, water and wastewater, and some of those, just, they don't get to enjoy the same holidays that some...
Can the rec center not be closed?
It could, but it potentially, I mean, it could, it'd be unprecedented, they're going to have some of the same issues too, where classes and different things are already scheduled.
Is there aftercare that, there that...
Yeah, I don't, I'm not sure if the after-school program, because if kids are out of school, that a lot of times we're...
They're half-day.
We sometimes are the childcare provider, effectively.
Now, I know you said eight hours for employees, and now police fire and EMS, they work what sometimes, I mean, some...
For these purposes, they only get, they get credited the same as every other employee, which is an eight-hour, you have to give everybody an equitable balance.
Well, but they're, they're working, they would be working more, can we not give them the two hours? Because if, because the other people aren't working...
But you would be basically saying to some employees, we're going to give you more holidays than others, we'd have to change the personnel ordinance.
Can we look into that?
We can look into it.
Right, I mean, not with, right, not, not with this, but I'm just talking later on, because the other employees are working eight hours, and those other employees are working 10, it just, to me, would make sense and fairness.
Then you're going to have to get a fire EMS 24 under that philosophy, which is going to blow up their lead balances like, like, really bad.
Well, can we look into something possibly, I mean, not, not here, not make that decision?
Sure, sure.
Is that something, maybe to, something?
We can take a look at it.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All in favor for giving the town employees the day off on Friday? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
I do have one more question, but you're going to, you're going to check on like the rec center and, and the other departments?
What do you mean to say other departments, I don't know what you mean, rec center, I would not advise closing the rec center unless you have to, I can check with Josh about that, but they're going to have, it poses a problem when they post a calendar for their members and that sort of thing, and then they just stop and close.
Wait, but you're talking...
Because those people subscribe to it, there's classes, they're signed up for, and different things like that, there's a lot of issues with doing it this quickly.
And when schools close, a lot of parents do rely on it being open, to either take their kids there or send their kids there.
Okay, that's fine, sure. Thank, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
So we're going to make this a roll call vote, Mr. Gilman?
Aye.
Patterson, aye.
Taylor, aye.
Atkins, aye.
Atkins, aye.
Johnson. Next, it's new business, business ranking?
No new business, okay.
Any staff reports, Mr. Johnson?
Very briefly, just wanted to make a mention of a, of a smoke detector blitz that occurred over the weekend, and commend the work of the Withfield Fire and EMS Department, who worked with the American Red Cross, the Virginia Department of Fire Programs, the State Fire Marshal's Office, and numerous volunteers to knock on 150 doors over the weekend, they installed 51 smoke detectors, and discussed fire prevention with, with an additional 70 people over the weekend. They, we had just a ton of volunteers, including students from Emory and Henry College, all the, all the agencies I mentioned, and we also had several participant sponsors who donated food and drinks, those were Food Lion, Food City, Walmart, Hardee's, McDonald's, Papa John's, Domino's, and Little Caesar's. So on behalf of the Withfield Fire and EMS Department, I just want to say thank you to everyone who helped with that, you made 50, 51 homes considerably safer with that, this is something they intend to repeat at a minimum annually, but possibly to do this a couple of times a year. And they try to target areas that statistically speaking, often don't have these types of devices in their homes, so to, to have gotten 51 smoke detectors installed is a true life-saving venture. I also wanted to mention to you all that the Treasurers' Office will be closed starting on Wednesday due to this software conversion. The, the announcement that was put out by the Treasurers' Office carries this through April the 3rd, the hope is that this is just a one or two-day closure, but basically, they, they wanted to, to kind of buffer that, and put out the announcement to close through March, excuse me, April the 3rd. Once that software conversion starts, they, the AS400 system we have will be shut down, they will not be able to make any sort of entries into the system, they will not be able to extract information, they will not be able to get inside of the finance system at all, so I wanted to make you all aware of that. Other than that, did you have a question?
Is everything backed up, I mean, everything's like, I'm sure backed up, right?
Everything is backed up, everything is backed up, they've done some testing, and so far, those tests seem to be working well, spoke to Mike again about it this morning, their hope is that this can be done on Wednesday, and they could potentially be open... Their hope is that this can be done on Wednesday and they could potentially be a, open backup, potentially, uh, Thursday or Friday. But we don't want to promise that because it's really, it's pretty much out of our hands. So, just wanted to make sure you all were aware of that. Uh, just, these are basically just a couple of announcements I wanna make on, on behalf of some of our department heads. We are in need of soccer officials, so if you know anyone who would like to officiate soccer games, please send them our way. Also, there is a lifeguard course coming up at the rec center. Um, there's a number of sessions, I won't quote all the dates. Um, there's, uh, another one coming up in April, April 25th through 28th. There is a cost for this unless you become employed by, unless you are employed by the Town of Withfull as a lifeguard. We are always in need of lifeguard and, uh, that summer lifeguard ramp up is, 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 will be here before you know it. So if you know any, uh, teenagers, but they don't, I, I shouldn't even say teenagers, sometimes, uh, retired adults can make fantastic lifeguards. Um, anyone that would like to be, uh, a lifeguard, please, uh, send them our way. This is, there is a nationwide trend that, uh, lifeguarding, uh, is down. And so it puts a real strain on us to, to get our pools staffed over the summer. Also, uh, the Kid Venture Program is now accepting applications for counselors for that program. So if you know any, uh, really responsible young adults or, or otherwise, please send them our way. Thank you.
All right, next on the agenda is, uh, Deputy Clerk Randy Jones, upcoming, upcoming meetings.
Um, the joint IDA will meet on Thursday, March 28th at 3:00 PM here in the council chambers. And the next council budget work session will be held at 4:00 PM on Monday, April 2, April 8th at, um, I'm sorry, April 8th, 2024, prior to the regular, regular scheduled Withfull Town Council meeting at 5:00 PM here in the council chamber.
Move on to, uh, council member time. Mr. Neillman, it's on your side.
Um, any thoughts this time?
Mayor?
Nothing to report, Mr.?
And I will pass as well, just a second. Uh, just wanted to check on the u- update for the windows, by chance? When, if they have been ordered and maybe when they're gonna be installed?
I'll have to get a, get you an answer for that.
Okay. Uh, and of course, I'm gonna, um, the TVs.
I think we've got some quotes for that work.
Okay.
We'll have to bring back some more information, please.
Uh, and then the delineators, I can never say that, uh, right, but, um, have those been looked into?
My understanding is that they all have it.
They do?
Sure, that's, that's what I'm told. Now, short of me personally inspecting every vehicle, uh, I'm told they all have either lights, um, or reflective. A lot of them have the, I'll call it a yield sign, uh, triangles on the back of them.
Yeah, I'm, I'm talking about the.
I think you're talking about like reflective stickers perhaps?
Right.
Yeah, I, I'm told they all have something, but I don't know if specifically what you're saying. When I looked up delineators, all I saw was traffic cones, but I think you're talking about.
Chief Ash, can you help me out here for a second? What are they called? They're like on the back of cars where it directs traffic going by? You wanna help me? Anybody I know, I've seen them, you know, they're like on state police cars and they direct traffic, actually pull them away besides directing them into like public.
That would be the strobe lights.
No, I, no, strobe, like, uh, the re- the reflector.
Those are yours. They're probably on the back of the floor trucks. Uh, the orange and white reflective, there's these stickers.
Basically, what are they called, aren't they called like delineators, I always probably say that wrong.
Let's get together and talk about it some more and figure out what we need, what we need. They, I know all of the, all of the, the, uh, public works vehicles have some form of reflect, additional reflectors or a siren, not a siren, a, uh, like a beacon strobe, um, and those, those types of things. A lot of, all the tractors have the strobe, they have the, the, the written, I'll call it a yield sign for like a better term, um, on the backs of them. But that's what I'm told.
Okay, but, but my, my, my question is, is like the reflectors to direct traffic and, uh, like, you know, sometimes if you're going by, you know, and I don't wanna use a police car, but sometimes, you know, you might wanna be like drawn in, you know, but sometimes I think if they direct in a different way, uh, and I just was looking at that for the public works, um, you know, to, for safety.
No, the fire department has, like, a strobe lights, it's directions light.
I'm gonna call it directional strobe.
Yeah, directional strobe. That's what the fire department.
Okay, well, okay, let, let me just try to, I'm sorry, like on a tailgate on a public works vehicle, you know, like the back of it. Uh, sorry, I'm using my hands for those who, uh, I'm sorry, but anyway, you know, they're sort of diagonal, diagonally.
Yeah, yeah.
Is what you're referring to, something like that?
Yes, what is that called?
They're just sticker, just for stickers, basically, decals.
Like the decals.
Okay, I think they are called something else, but anyway, um, that's what I'd like to see. Whatever those are, I've asked for, for a long time, I'd like to see them all for safety reason for our employees. Not necessarily just the fire, police, but also public workers as well. You know, when they're out there in the morning doing mowing and, and things like that, um.
Okay, and now I know.
But yay, okay, um, and I reserve the right, that's all, thank you. I'm gonna find out what that correct terminology is. Ms. Johnson, Johnson?
Yes, I do. Um, a citizen reached out to me and asked if the position, uh, education curator with the museums could become a full-time position. I asked if council could maybe have a discussion and possibly consider that. Um, I know that we have several work sessions coming up with the budget, so, um, but they did reach out and ask if that could become a full-time position.
Is that somebody that's interested in taking that position?
I'm sorry?
Great, I said, is that somebody that's interested in taking that position, that would be great.
I think someone currently works in that position, but they would like for them to, they would like for, to see it become a full-time position instead of a part-time position.
I just thought there was, there was, so, somebody was, they were looking for somebody else.
That's correct. The individual people's that part-time position is entirely dependent.
I was wondering if it was, somebody was interested in taking it. Yeah, I think we ought to talk about it.
I believe that is also something that the director reasons was.
Okay, so maybe we can have a discussion in one of our work sessions about that. Um, maybe invite Mr. Gerlick and have a discussion, see how he feels about that. And I reserve the right to come back.
The comeback bail is not here tonight. But, but.
I didn't hear what you said.
I said the comeback bail, and what do you know, reserve the right to come back.
Yes, ma'am.
It's not here.
I have, yes.
All right, uh, anybody would like to give a report on their council committee that they sit on? I hear, I hear nothing there. So at this point, um, council finds it necessary to go into, uh, closed meetings. Pursuant to 2.2-3711A1 to discuss the performance of appointed employees requires motion and a vote, please. I have a motion? So, may it. Motion, rather, second? Second. Motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye? Aye. Aye, as well? We are now, we need a short recess or can we go back to closed session?
It will now be necessary to reconvene into open session and to certify the closed meeting. To certify the closed meeting, it will require a motion and a roll call vote of the council. The motion should state that only the following items was discussed at the closed meeting lawfully permitted to be discussed pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A1: The performance of appointed employees. I need a motion.
I move that we only discuss the performance of an appointed employee.
Motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? You're not. This will be roll call vote. Hillman?
Aye.
Patterson on?
Taylor on?
Atkins on.
Johnson on.
We are now back in regular session. If there is nothing else on the agenda, so I will now close this.